All right, we'll go ahead and open the Planning Commission meeting for December 1st at 6:32. We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I believe Commissioner Lohman is at a seminar of some kind.
And Commissioner Meltzer sent me a message today saying she wouldn't be able to attend.
All right. So with our pledge behind us, we'll go ahead and go to a roll call.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
And Commissioner Willis?
Here.
And in case you were not aware, Commissioner Stevens has resigned, so we have a position open.
Okay.
And that's already been advertised, and so we're already, we haven't received any applications yet, but we're accepting them. Anybody you know of that is interested, they're welcome to apply. And this particular position is open to anyone who lives within the school district boundaries.
All right. All right, so we'll go through our formalities. In regard to public content comment, this is the time if anybody wishes to address the commission for anything that is not on our agenda this evening, this would be the time to do so. As there are none, we will move on to our meeting minutes. So, meeting minutes for October 6, 2022. Are there any changes, corrections, amendments that anybody wants to make note of?
No.
I think we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then moving on to the November 17th, 2022 minutes. Any corrections, alterations? Excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll go ahead and move along to our public hearings. We have application CU 22-12. And we will open the public hearing at 6:35. And I don't believe we have those in our binders, is that correct?
No, I, you should have a memo in there, so, and I'll just read it real quick. City staff would like to request a continuation of the public hearing for application CU 22-12 per Sweet Home Municipal Code 17.12.120E. The notice shall be mailed at least 20 days prior to the date of the hearing. Staff mail notice to surrounding neighbors within 300 feet on November 4, 2022. However, notices were not emailed to internal departments and applicable servants agencies until November 21, 2022. This delay has caused a need for a continuation of the public hearing. We have to give a sufficient amount of time for comment period. That was my fault.
So, do you, would you like us to make a motion to continue?
To December 15.
And we are gonna do a December?
Well, is this the only thing that would be on the agenda for that meeting?
Yes. So we can wait till January.
Yeah, and this is the part, right? So it's certainly up to you when to continue it, too. This would be the only thing on the agenda for December 15 meeting. But it could wait till January also if you would like.
So I won't be present when it'll, I'm, I can't come on the 15th.
Okay.
I don't believe I would be available as well.
The next meeting would be January 5.
January 5, 2023.
And we probably would have more business anyway.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to continue CU 22-12?
I make a motion that we continue the application for CU 22-12 to the January 5, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll go ahead and
Thank you.
close that public hearing at 6:37. And we will move on to the Sweet Home Housing Needs Analysis. Let the good times roll.
I'm glad you're also excited.
Always. We're all hopped up on hot chocolate and cookies.
Excellent.
It was interesting.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, great, should we just jump right in?
Do we want to go ahead and state names and addresses for the record, or is this more of a continuation not needed?
I don't know that that's needed, because it's, but you're welcome to, you're the chair, so.
I'm, I'm fine with it, as it's a continuation of old business.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and introduce ourselves just again, just so everyone remembers who we are. It's been, it's been a few months, and by the way, thanks for allowing us to do this virtually. It's, 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 I was at the coast today, so I've been doing a lot of driving already. But I'm Scott Friganesi with 3J Consulting, and we've been, the part of the consulting team helping get you through the housing needs analysis work.
And my name is Tim Wood, I'm a project manager with FCS Group. We've been the other half of the project team.
Great. And Angela, I don't know how, how would you best like me to do this? I can share my screen with the presentation, or would you like to share the PDF of the presentation?
You can just share your screen.
Okay.
There's not, there's nobody else in here but us, so it's probably works best if you just share yours.
Okay. See how good I can do this.
Just a quick note for our record and our staff, this television is just totally glitching. It's, it's off more than it's on.
Turn it off.
Yeah, we'll just leave it off.
You want me to angle one of these other TVs so you can see better?
If, if you could. We have, I think we have most of the slides, but they're gonna have some stuff we don't, I think.
I think you should, this, the house, this slide should be the one, the same that you're in your packet.
Okay.
And I think the, the new thing that you have in the packet that we didn't share with you last time is the actual finalized Housing Needs Analysis Report, which can, which includes pretty much everything, all the work we've done to date. And tonight, what we really wanted to do, some of these sections, we've already shown you. For example, the buildable lands inventory, the, the housing needs projection, the reconciliation of the supply and demand. You've seen all this in the previous meetings. I've, I've left it in this presentation, just to give you a quick refresher. So rather than go through in detail the sections that we already have, I was thinking we would just highlight some of the main things, just to remind you all of kind of the, the main findings for those sections. And the real thing that we wanted to discuss tonight was the housing policy recommendations. So we have a set of new policies that we were hoping to recommend to be put into your comprehensive plan chapter for residential lands and housing. So that's kind of, I think, the main meat of the discussion. But Tim and I will go through these sections of the presentation. And of course, if there's any questions as we're going through, please just interrupt us, stop us, and, and let us know if you have questions, we can take them as we go through this. We'll try and keep it fairly concise, because we did spend, you know, a good 40 minutes going through a lot of this information at our last meeting. So hopefully that worked for you all. Again, the main pieces of this effort are doing your housing needs projection, the BLI, the buildable lands, the residential land needs analysis, and these policies. Last time, again, we didn't get to the policy measures for accommodating the needed housing, but we do have them today, so that's hopefully gonna be the heart of our discussion this evening. Taking a look back at our schedule, we've been at this all year now. We are a little behind, we were thinking we might be in adoption in November, December, but I think we'll be in adoption at the council level probably early next year at this point, which is not a big deal. We still have that flexibility. But the idea is after tonight, if you are all happy with these policy recommendations and the Housing Needs Analysis Report, that we would then move on to, present them to council at the next, next meeting. So, Tim, I don't know if you want to go through these very quickly, or just, you want me to highlight some of this stuff?
I, I could, yeah, I'm happy to run through it really quickly.
Okay.
You know, but as you said, of course, this is a lot of review. So, you know, the, the amount of folks that we're planning for over the next 20 years, that, that makes up a big part of, of what we're planning for. And PSU's projecting 1,573 new residents for the Sweet Home UGB in the next 20 years. So that, that constitutes the universe of, of growth that we're trying to plan for here. To review really quickly, the
Tim, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yeah, of course.
I just wanted to make you aware, our, our preliminary PSU numbers came out a couple weeks ago.
Oh.
So we, we are at, yeah, of course.
Start over.
It's not significant, but we're at 10,097.
Excellent, well, I'm sure that you're happy to hear that you're at 10,000 now, you've got a lot more administrative obligations, so that's great. Yeah, yeah, exactly, welcome to the club. So, good to know that, that you've, that you've surpassed the 10,000 mark. And as you continue your journey on to, to 12,000, we're hoping that, that our work can be helpful. Again, just to kind of reiterate the existing conditions of the housing inventory in Sweet Home, predominantly single-family detached, as you can see here, 73% of the, the housing stock of the 4,107 housing units that, that are in Sweet Home right now. The rest is townhomes, plexes, and multifamily, each making up 7% of the inventory, and then 13% in the manufactured home category. Vacancy here, 5% in 2020. We expect that to be a, a Scotch higher, but, but that's, that's about standard for, for most cities in Oregon. And to, another way of looking at this, again, as a matter of review, just to understand, you know, who lives where. So your ownership, your, your folks who own their homes are almost exclusively in single-family detached with a little section there in the manufactured home category, and then you've got kind of a smattering of renters throughout the, all, all four categories of, of housing. So, a pretty good mix. Average household size, this, this helps to determine, you know, this, this helps us to understand what we divide that population growth by. And so you can see in Sweet Home, it sort of fluctuated over the last 10 years, which, you know, especially as you kind of zoom in on a place in census data, it starts to get, you know, maybe a, a little bit less consistent, but you can see that there's, you know, we're in a pretty tight range there between 2.41 and 2.59, so we're, we're getting up there, we're a little less than we were in 2015. Just by way of discussing affordability really quickly, among those renter households that, that we saw a couple slides back, you've got about 28% of those households experiencing severe rent burden, which is a condition where 50% or more of the household income is being spent on rent exclusively. So a little higher than the state and the county average, but, you know, in, in my experience, you know, kind of not, not atypical, certainly. But, but something to consider as we go forward, just in terms of what housing is available and, you know, affordability generally. And that affordability equation is largely stoked by the housing cost. What we're looking at here is median home prices. So we're looking at the last three years or so. So March of this year, median home cost in, in Sweet Home was 348,000. That's up from about 244,000 back in March of 2020. Annual change there, about 19.4%, so pretty significant change over the last two years. We expect that might level off, but just a good thing to keep in mind as we're talking about policies later tonight. And, you know, again, to, to sort of hammer home that, that affordability issue, you can see here, we've got the different occupations, their average wages, and what that'll afford them in this, in this area. So, again, reviewing that, that lawyers and engineers both have max mortgages of 655,000 and 430,000 respectively. So they can probably afford a home in Sweet Home, but once we get down to teachers, medical assistants, and retail salespeople, they're probably gonna get priced out of the market in terms of ownership opportunities. Rental costs there, you can see a teacher can afford a max rent of about $1,600, a medical assistant, $1,000, and a retail salesperson, $800 a month. So, you know, that, that can get pretty unaffordable pretty quickly, and that's, that's largely what's fueling, especially at that retail salesperson level. That's what's fueling that, that severe rent burden that we talked about in the last, the last slide. So, bottom line here, to reiterate, is that Sweet Home's gonna need about 630 new dwelling units over the next 20 years. Most of that, as you can see here, is in owner-occupied dwellings. And you can see they're kind of the second from the left column. 325 of the 363 units in owner-occupied will be single-family detached. So that's a lot like what we're seeing today among renter-occupied units, a little bit more of a mix, but still predominantly single-family detached. And then we, we're allowed to take a vacancy assumption, which kind of helps to, you know, equalize the projected need, about 31 units there for that total of 632 units over the next 20 years. And Scott, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, excellent recap. I'm not gonna go through all these maps, you know, I mentioned last time, I'm a map nerd, so I love maps, but we'll go through them quickly. We looked at settlement patterns where your building footprints are, these are your tax lots, your existing land uses from commercial all the way to public lands. Took a look at the zoning layer as well, which is really important in terms of what can be built where from a regulatory standpoint. And as well as your comprehensive plan map, I think I mentioned this before, but I was very impressed that your zoning map and your comprehensive plan map are matchup. Many cities I work in, they don't, and it's, it makes it very difficult as a planner, so kudos to you all for keeping that up to date. In terms of looking at residential lands, these are all the areas that we, we looked at for potential new units to be placed. Identified all the vacant lands, and then identified all the partially vacant lands. So these are large, lots that are larger than a half acre. They're assumed that they could potentially be subdivided. They may have one home on them now, but potentially could have more units in the future. And then other miscellaneous lots were also looked at that as well. So this is kind of a combination of all the different vacant land types that are available throughout the city. And then developed land, and then what would be, have no residential potential at all. And then also redevelopment potential. So the purple properties, we're saying, do have some redevelopment potential based on their improvement value. So let's say the structure is worth a lot less than the property, we assume that there's some redevelopment potential on those properties. So here we go, we look at the vacant land and developed land together. It's composite of both of those layers. And then constraints, so you gotta remember, all that land, just because it's there and vacant, doesn't mean it's always developable. So removing public lands is important. Removing parks, because they're not gonna be used for future housing. Any open water, I guess unless you had a houseboat, but we're not counting those in this, in this situation. So we remove that as a constraint as well. Flood planes get removed, they're restricted for development, as well as any steep slopes. We assume that anything over 25% slope would be removed from your buildable lands inventory, as well as wetland areas. Now, wetlands is interesting, these are your locally significant wetland layer. They're not necessarily undevelopable, but typically they're a lot more difficult to develop. So there is mitigation processes that you can go through. So here's your buildable land supply, it looks, you know, it looks good, you have quite a bit of land. I guess the main thing is you have about 594 acres of vacant land and about 322 of partially vacant land. So, and then in terms of, whoops, excuse me. Then we looked at it also by zone, so buildable lands by zone. Interestingly enough, the most planned you have is low-density residential in terms of buildable lands by zone, it's 526. Second follow-up would be recreational, commercial. So that's this kind of green layer here. So hopefully that helps remember what we looked at in terms of buildable land. We need to know where, if we have enough buildable land supply for the projected needed units over the next 20 years. So that's why it's important to take a look at those maps. Any questions on any of those? All right. I think, Tim, I'm handing it back to you real quick.
Yeah, I'll tag in. So to review what we talked about about seven minutes ago, we'll be, we'll be needing about 632 units in, in Sweet Home over the next 20 years in this configuration. So that's divided up by single-family detached, 460 units, 85 units in manufactured homes and cottages, 42 in townhomes and plexes, and 45 in multifamily. So the way that we calculate land sufficiency, first step is to calculate the need for land to accommodate the 20-year growth in residential land. So here we're, we're kind of indicating, moving left to right on this table, applicable comprehensive plan land designations, applicable zoning designations, and so that kind of hearkens back to that buildable land inventory map that Scott was showing you. Next, we look at allowable densities on those lands. You wanna bop back over there real quick?
Oh, sorry about that.
No worries. One more, just back to that, that, there we go, that perfect, perfect. We're talking allowable densities there, so just, this is the range of dwelling units allowed per acre based on the zones and comprehensive land designations to come to that average development density there. So among single-family detached lands, about four, four units per acre. Manufactured homes and cottages, 6.5 units per acre. Nine units per acre for townhomes and plexes, and 18 units per acre for multifamily. So that's, no worries, no worries. So that gets us to the net buildable land requirement there. So 115 for single-family detached, 13 for manufactured, five for townhomes, plexes, and two for multifamily. We're allowed to up that a little bit to account for public facilities like roads, schools, parks, that kind of thing that comes along with residential development. So we're allowed to bump that up by 25%. As you can see there on the far-right column, so we've got a calculated land need of about 169 acres over the next 20 years. Now let's go to the next table. So, so we take the data that 3J gave us, and we, we calculate all of the different categories of, of buildable land. So, you know, we sort of ignore developed and other land there on the far-left column. We're mostly focused on vacant, part vacant and redevelopable, but we're mostly focused on that total buildable column, second from the right there. So those are all of the, the net buildable lands in Sweet Home in those different zone categories. So we've got a lot, we've got about nearly 1,100 acres in total. Of course, a lot of those categories, well, I guess a lot of these do, allow residential development on them. You know, commercial lands, maybe less so, but, but, you know, a lot of explicitly residential land here in the urban growth boundary. So let's go to the next slide. And this is where we take that gross buildable land requirement that we saw two tables ago for each of these different categories, that 169 net acres needed over the next 20 years. We juxtapose that with the buildable land inventory there, which is the, the second from the right column. So again, plenty of land there, 1,100 acres. And we, we come to our surplus or deficiency in each of these categories. So you can see among single-family detached and multi, or sorry, manufactured homes and cottages, we've got a huge surplus, about 805 acres. Among those higher-density categories, townhomes, plexes, and multifamily, we've got a surplus of 124 acres. Still really sizable, but, but you can see there's a difference there for a total surplus in residential categories of 929 acres. So the, the, the main conclusion here is that there's plenty of land in the urban growth boundary to meet the 20-year need.
Yeah, and I think we talked about this last time, a lot of that land is, it just needs infrastructure. And that's kind of your, one of your biggest, you know, constraints to having that development occur. So, okay, here we are to kind of what I wanted to go through tonight. These are the policies from your current comp plan. So the comp plan's nearly 20 years old. The whole goal of this project here for housing needs is to take a look at your future need, and then look at the policies in your comprehensive plan to see if they're still relevant. And do we need to add additional policies? So what we've done is we reviewed that. Interestingly enough, I went through, we went through all of your current housing policies, and we're working on a few of these in a lot of other cities. And interestingly enough, a lot of the other cities have out-of-date policies or policies that are no longer valid. But in looking at your current housing policies, I really recommend leaving all of them in and then adding another set on top of these. So these are your current housing policies, we'll go through these real quick. So your first ones, residential areas will offer a wide variety of housing and locations to best suit each housing type. Sweet Home will encourage redevelopment, rehabilitation, redevelopment of older residential areas. The city encourages flexibility in design to promote safety, livability, and preservation of natural features. Sweet Home established density recommendations in the plan in order to maintain proper relationships between proposed public facilities, services, and population distribut, distribution. The city will work with public and nonprofit organizations that provide affordable housing within the community. Schools and parks shall be distributed throughout the residential section of the community. So again, these are all still very valid, and I would recommend keeping these in your comp plan as current policies. We have three slides of them, I can go through them all. Another one is, you know, where non-residential uses above residential areas in the community, non-residential uses shall be subject to special development standards. Efforts will be made to complete or connect existing sidewalks along routes, schools, parks, and commercial areas. I thought that was kind of interesting that, you know, you even have that transportation-related policies that tie back to your housing chapter, which is, I think, pretty positive. And then in terms of development of residential local streets, whenever possible, will increase connectivity between neighborhoods. The maximum net development density is not including streets, and high-density residential areas shall not exceed 35 multifamily dwelling units per acre based on the standards for this type. Now, I did leave this in here, we can, this could be a discussion point in terms of if you feel like this number could change. It, I was, I was thinking it could actually maybe be bumped up to 45, but I left it as is for now, but that was, just remember that if you want to have a discussion about that maximum density for multifamily dwelling units. That could be something that you might want to look at increasing. I did not recommend that, but it could be something that's, that's important to you all. And medium-density residential areas, single-family dwellings, and two-family dwellings on a corner lot would be consistent with the prevailing character of development areas and comparable with adjoining land uses in underdeveloped areas. In these areas, the maximum net density shall not exceed nine dwelling units per acre. So this one's really kind of highlighting that you can do, you know, duplexes on corner lots, and that's just fine as long as you don't exceed nine dwelling units per acre. I looked at that number, too. I thought, my, my, my gut feeling was that if I had a cha, if I, if I, I would probably change it to 10, but I don't think nine is a bad number. So I left it as is, but that's another thing we can, we can discuss if you're all are interested in, in that. And then this is the last slide on your current policies, but the maximum net, net density, not including streets, for low-density residential are not to exceed 5.4 dwelling units per acre in single-family dwellings. I think that that's a, a fine number, and Tim, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we assumed four units for our purposes. So even the policies would exceed what we're, we're assuming in the, in, in the calculations for the projections.
Yeah.
Okay. And then many of the hillside areas, it slopes less than 25%, provide attractive sites for residents. The city may enact special development standards governing hillside development on sloped areas. This is very normal, it's a good thing to do. There's things, typically cities will, and I, I would bet you, you all do it already, will, will require a geo-hazard or geotechnical report for projects, any building in areas that have steep slopes. And then efforts will be made to extend trails, pedestrian ways, bike paths for existing residential areas, and then to encourage connectivity with, and pedestrian access. And then to encourage connectivity with, and pedestrian access, residential blocks shall meet the development standards, except when topographical constraints make the standards impractical. When existing conditions or the topography prevent cross, across street, a pedestrian accessway will connect, streets should be considered as part of the development. So again, interestingly enough, you have a lot of connectivity and transportation and pedestrian and biking policies in your housing policies. Before I go into the new ones that we're recommending, is there any questions or thoughts about your cor- your current policies? Or anything about the densities that I've mentioned? Okay. So we actually recommended an additional one. I think 12, 11 or 12 additional policy recommendations. And this first one is actually really important and it's something that the state is actually now requiring is to have clear and objective standards. So ensure that land use codes include clear and objective standards for housing developments and does not have the effect of discouraging needing housing throughout, through unreasonable cost or delay or reducing a proposed housing density already allowed by zoning. So the idea here is that your codes have clear and objective standards for development. So you're not making things more difficult to be built. I think that's a really important one. That's something that almost all cities now include as policies in their housing chapters. This is an interesting one, too. Create a marketing campaign that increases awareness and participation within the federal solar tax credit to provoke, to provide homeowners and renters assistance in upgrading their homes to be more energy efficient. So this is the idea that there are solar programs that we can incentivize some of our citizens to use as they do develop new housing programs or developments. This one's kind of need to conduct fair housing audit of the city's development process and development code. An audit would look at existing definitions, restriction standards that, and standards that triggered conditional use permits and impacts of policies on, on protect classes. So this one's interesting because what here is what you do is you'd actually take a deep dive and this could be a whole nother project that you could, you could look at, at your existing codes and to see if there's anything in your codes that are really precluding development and new, and new housing. And number 19 would be identify areas of high priority for improving infrastructure to support residential development. This was something that came out specifically from our last meeting when we talked about that need for infrastructure. So you'd be, you know, essentially focusing on opportunities for new development, higher-density zones, particularly in areas with vacant land zone for housing. So this is the idea about looking at areas you want to provide housing and are good, but just need infrastructure and figuring out a way to help, how, how the city support that being brought into place. Plan for 20-year supply of suitable housing, of suitable lands for Sweet Home to meet the housing needs through regular monitoring and adjustments of available residential lands. So this is just saying you need to look, do this process that we've done in terms of your buildable lands, occasionally every once in a while to make sure you're not running out. Now, this is not so important for you because we do know you have so much available land, but it is something you do want to monitor as, as the city continues to grow. Another one would be streamline the permitting process to reduce costs and delay of new housing units. You wouldn't really think about it, but a lot of the time, just having a long process for getting a permit will make projects unfeasible because of the cost of that time. Time is money, so to speak, so figuring out a way to streamline some of those processes could be beneficial. Number 22 is to provoke, to promote the development of accessory dwelling units as a means to contribute to the overall housing stock and rental market. So having a good way to promote doing accessory dwelling units, some cities actually will waive SDCs for dwell, for ADUs, but just something to consider as a policy. 23 would be identify publicly owned properties that could be, could be used for affordable housing. So if the city does own properties that could potentially be used for affordable housing, there's all sorts of great public-private partnerships that could be used to develop affordable housing on city-owned land. 24 would be consider deferrals or waivers of SDCs for affordable housing developments. This is another one where if a developer came in with apartment proposal, for example, and said, hey, if I do 20% of my uni- units at affordable rates, will you waive or reduce some of my system development charges? So that's something that a policy that we would also recommend. 25 would be monitor the annual number of total housing units, regulated, rated affordable units, multifamily units, regulated affordable multifamily units and single-family units, and regulated affordable single-family units. This is really just saying, keep a track of the number of units you're building every year and see if it matches kind of the forecast that we've, we've laid out here in terms of your need. And finally, the last one's 26 would be to explore opportunities to remove undevelopable lands from the buildable lands inventory, including comprehensive plan amendments, zoning, rezoning and, and land exchanges. So this would be just if you're, if you have someone come in with the rezoning, you want to have this policy in place saying, hey, are we looking at this from a perspective of housing? And are we making these changes that are going to be positive in terms of production of future housing? And I have to say, I, I was kicking myself on my way back from the coast to do this meeting because there was one that I left out of here that I think we should add. And it was a big topic conversation at the last meeting and it was a discussion about fire resiliency and fire buffering and fire protection. So I would like to propose if, that, that we add one specific to wildfires and, 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 and resiliency in terms of fire protection. So that's one, that, that would be number 27.
Yeah, and actually, we're, we're actually in the midst of that right now because there's a, a Lynn County wildfire. I forgot what exactly what it's called, but there's a, a group of us that are already looking at, at that issue right now, actually.
Awesome. Well, I think if we could come up with a policy to include in the comp plan surrounding that for housing specifically, I think that'd be great.
That would help support it, yes. One thing I did want to point out, 18, which is the, the audit.
Yeah.
We actually, as part of our code update, we actually did go through a code audit
Okay.
on that recently, so that's bear, that's, that's just been done, I, no doubt, we may want to do that in the future. And then 24, the, the one on SDC waivers for affordable housing. Our SDC code was updated when we recently updated our SDCs and there is a provision in there for, for waivers for affordable housing if they apply for it also.
Awesome, so maybe we change consider to continue.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, perfect, that's awesome, good feedback.
If we could also add the, add your verbiage for reduce in number 24. I don't know how many times they'll defer all the SDCs or waive them, but
Okay.
could add reduction.
Yes, definitely.
Do that as well.
Yes.
And, and really quick, number 17, where it says federal solar tax credit.
Yeah.
If we could find a more generalized term for green energy or renewable resources. I've seen federal tax credits come and go, and so if we're tied to one federal tax credit versus another one that might come available next year.
That's a great point, I like that. We, I want to continue this discussion, but I did want to point out one more thing and then I'll stop sharing my screen. Excuse me. The other thing we're working on, I mentioned this, but is, is the, is the comp plan chapter. So I've mentioned it's about 20 years old. And a lot of the data in there is from 2000. So all of your housing numbers, all of your housing goals, all of your housing information in the chapter are, are, you know, based off 2020 numbers. So I, I just wanted you all to know that as part of that, this project, we've also are looking at updating your, your residential lands and housing chapters of comp plan. So not only will these policies be updated, but all of the, all the numbers based on the housing needs analysis will update that chapter as well. So as part of the adoption of the housing needs analysis will also be an adoption of the updated residential lands and housing chapter of the comp plan. So, and then ne- again, next steps are going to be your adoption probably early next year. And that, as, as part of that, we'll be looking at the comprehensive plan chapter. So we can jump back if you want to, but, and I was thinking, you know, I know that's a lot of policies to look at and to make recommendations on in a meeting like this. And Blair and Angela, I don't know if the best thing would be to maybe, you know, let everyone look at these and if they want to email any other recommendations or thoughts or if you think we're missing some that we can add additional, I'm happy to take recommendations from you all in terms of additional policies or edits to these policies. I understand that it's not always the most efficient to, to do that in a meeting setting, but I do want to give you all the opportunity to, to give additional feedback.
I think that's a great id- I think that's a great idea to have a specified review period and, and we get back to you with any, with any recommended changes.
Okay.
Does the commission agree?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I do.
Okay. So what time period would you like to set for that, Scott?
You know, it's, it's not a rush, I mean, we, if, we could say, you know, I think we're probably going to be, I don't know, two, how many weeks do you need, two weeks, three weeks before Christmas?
Our next, our next planned meeting is the January 5th.
Yeah, okay. I think that's fine, if you want to bring those back or we can collect them via email. Either way, that's fine, we can go, we can definitely wait till January 5th, there's no rush.
I think we can, yeah, we can have the, the commissioners email Angela and I before then with any, with any changes they'd like to see.
Awesome, well, I hope you like them, I think we did, you know, we worked hard to try and match the policies with, you know, what your future need would be, and I think there's some new stuff in there that I think is real relevant to Sweet Home that, that will, that makes a lot of sense.
I like the new policies that you added, it just gives more breadth and depth to the policies that were already there and makes it a little bit more current.
I, I agree, thank you. And that's, that's our show for the night.
Cool.
Thanks Scott and Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks y'all.
Have a great evening.
You too.
So if the commissioners are okay, I have to, I will be putting the packet out for the December 5th.
Turn your mic on.
I will be sending the packet out for the December 5th meeting on the 29th. So if
The January 5th.
That too. I'm not ready for it to be 20, 23 yet.
It's only the first, we're not having a meeting on the 5th.
So if you have any comments, if you could get them to me before that, and then I can get, kind of put them all together. And then we can review them at that meeting, I can put them in the packet and we can review them, so.
Okay.
So, you know, if we can have them by, by the 26th as a holiday, so by the 27th at least. And then I can have a few days to put them together, if that works.
Okay. So I guess at this point, we'll just, where we have staff updates and upcoming planning projects.
Yeah, I have pending right now, I'm working on five partitions and three property line adjustments. New code, I spoke with the individual that's uploading it all and getting it. We should have it up and loaded onto the website. Hopefully by tomorrow, she was working on it, she has to attach the ordinance first. And we found a couple errors that she's going to go in and fix and then we'll be able to upload it. So, so that's almost done, there are some things we will be bringing back, some amendments, just some minor things that we have found and just some clarifications that we found. I have spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks creating new templates and new applications to go along with it. I think it'll, they will be more defensible, make things a lot clearer. It's, the first few have taken a while for me to get through, but once I get the first few done, I'll have a good template to do it. And it's, you know, I just figured we have a new code, let's have a new template, let's start, you know, make things better from here on out. So the other thing I'm really pushing is hopefully by the first, I don't know if I'll have it done by the first meeting in January, but try to get the food truck code. We're going to try to get it reviewed so we can have that done because I got another call today about someone wanting to do two food trucks.
Yeah.
I've got to somehow push that up my list with our, we're also working on the transportation system plan right now, too, so lots going on.
Well, I know the forums can't be easy to have that balance between clarity and legalese. So that's a fine line to walk.
Trying to find ways to get people to give us the information we need without
Yeah.
having to turn it back to them and have them turn it into us again, over and over again, it's kind of frustrating. Somehow we'll get people to actually read.
And I think that goes into, back to the policies he's talking about too, is streamlining the permit process and just streamlining things in general.
And honestly, for, I, I know he, he recommended that as a policy and, and I think it's a good policy, but because it, it's always good to keep an eye on those things. But for, for any residential applications, we get through them pretty darn quick. The only time they ever take any amount of time is if they have property that's really not well-suited to what they want to do. If they, if they want to build something that is just either a conditional use or is not out, where they're in the wrong zone for what they want to do, you know, then it can take three, three to six months for approval, depending on what, how, the degree of what they're trying to do. But if you're trying to do something that is within the rules of the zone for the property, it's like, you can get approval really fast. You can, you'll, you'll be done with us and, you know, faster than your engineer, certainly, way faster. So I, I think we're pretty streamlined right now as it is. Especially now that we have the new code, it's easier to use and we have the, the more flexibility with the duplexes and, and ADUs in, in single-family residential areas. It's, it's going to be, it's way easy. There's not really, i- it's really, infrastructure is the only thing that really delays anything.
Yeah, and to tag on to that, legally, I have 120 days to get through a planning land use application. I usually, well, depending on noticing, you have to have so many days for noticing, whether it has to come in front of planning commission. I usually have them done within 45 to 60 days, it all depends on how many times.
Depending on how complex they are.
Yeah. So, and then when it goes to permitting in the building department, you know, people are surprised. Sometimes we can get through them in a couple of weeks, you know, like Blair said, you know, there's some complications like building a ranch style on a steep slope.
Right, right.
Kind of bring that up because we have that, but, but, you know, so for the most part, you know, we actually, we are actually pretty fast. And so, and it's, there are times where we get a lot of applications in at one time and it takes a little extra time, but we have one person in each department and we still manage to do pretty good jobs.
Well, and I think the message is getting out too, we've got some developers who have come back to us several times and who have been very appreciative of how fast that they've been able to get through. And again, it's because they've chosen projects that fit what the area already and they're not trying to do something weird. So it's, yeah, we're, I'm, I'm really pleased with our staff and they've done a great job getting people through.
So on this housing needs analysis, when it's all done, is that something that we're going to make available to Public Works and say, these are the identified lands? Can we make sure that our infrastructure is kind of steered this direction as far as?
So certainly, certainly those, that, that policy of wanting to extend an infrastructure, having a policy along those lines. The, the idea is you have, you, you should have all these plans and they all should take into each other, take each other into account. One of the problems that we've had in the last few years is that on the public work side, our master plans have been way out of date. And so we're in the midst of, of a water master plan right now and a stormwater master plan, both of which, the stormwater master plan in particular is sorely needed. And those, those two plans need to take this plan into account as well. And that's, that's one thing I'll be pushing forward as much as I can to say, hey, Public Works, here's the document. Give this to your engineers, you need to take this stuff into account. And they want to, they want a plan for that thing, that stuff, because for some reason, 20 years is the magic number for everybody. And every master plan out there, the comprehensive plan, water master plan, all this stuff, it all is going for a 20-year window. And, and they want to plan for that development that's going to happen.
As they brought up, our comprehensive plan is way old. I was making a comment to Blair, well, at least one chapter will be updated by the time we get done with this. That is definitely going to be on our list of things that are going to be next up on the, you know, after we get through some of this stuff. Yeah. Yeah, so, and, and this will be, this will be a good reminder to kind of prompt it that, you know, we'll get one chapter updated and then we can start working on the rest of it too, to kind of match with the new code.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have that one done and then move everything else around to modernize it.
Part of it was getting the code, getting the planning code done first and then now we can start moving on to the next step.
All these are supposed to be living documents that get updated on a regular basis. All these are supposed to be living documents that get updated on a regular basis. And they frankly haven't been, which is unfortunate, but a lot of times it's a funding issue of, you know, it's, it's for some reason really difficult to find funding for comprehensive plan updates. You can get funding for a housing needs analysis or, or a transportation system plan update, which we're doing. But for some reason, there's no grants out there for comprehensive plan updates, which is really unfortunate. I don't know why, but we, we pushed in the past for this to be included in the budget. We will continue pushing it. It wasn't able to happen this year. I don't know how the budget's going to look for next year, but I'm, I'm not exactly hopeful. But we will continue to, to press DLCD on this and other things and see what we can find grant-wise. Because it, it is something that I, I bring up, I've brought up with DLCD on a regular basis, saying, hey, I've, I've been able to get a grant for this and that and this. But nothing for, you know, in my ten years in Oregon, I've not been able to find any grants for a comprehensive plan update, and it doesn't make any sense. So we'll continue working on, but at least, you know, we've got a new housing chapter, basically, that we're, that we're getting. And a transportation system plan update will add a new, a new chapter there, too.
Just for our curiosity, what does this project? What has been the cost of this project? And is it paid for by grants, or is it?
This is a grant, this is grant-funded, and in fact, the city isn't even a pass-through financially for this particular grant. They, as far as I remember, I'm pretty sure, they, we, yeah, we haven't done any billing or anything on this one. It's, it's basically being, being paid directly from DLCD. So that's, that's good, but on the other hand, it also is bad in that I don't have any of that information. I think I have a rough estimate somewhere in my files, and I can, I can get that out to you.
It's not important. Not that important.
But it's, it's a significant amount of money. These aren't cheap. Like, if I were to guess, I'm thinking it's probably at least, at least forty thousand, probably more.
One other question that he brought up tonight in this. Why would we give preferential favors or treatment to a multi-unit for service systems development charges?
He was suggesting that if they have an affordable housing designation. Affordable how, depending on who you talk to, affordable housing is either understood to be low-income housing, or it's, they, they, it has different. It has baggage that comes along with it. Essentially, what it means, though, is it's housing that a significant portion of the housing is, is tagged to what a, an average, average wage people in the area can afford. That fits within the thirty percent of their, of their income kind of model. And so you could have market rate housing, which doesn't look into that at all, and all the apartments, not all, but most of the apartments, the newest apartments that we have in town are all market rate. So they wouldn't have qualified for any of the, the proposals that they made on SDC waivers. But if they had, say, you know, so they, you know, they reserved a certain number of units that would be deemed affordable and would be pegged more to, to that limit of thirty percent of, of, you know, average wage or something like that. That's what he's suggesting would, you know, there, you can, you can spur on the creation of more units like that if you offer a developer a break on the SDCs, where they, overall, they might look at it and say, oh, well, I can reduce this bill by this much if I make so many units affordable. And that'll cost me in the long run with the rent, but it'll decrease my costs to get started. And a lot, for a lot of them, it'll, it'll turn out to be worth it. So that's, that's the question, is do you want to encourage that kind of thing? It has its, its drawbacks as well, certainly. But it is, it is one of the tools of, of making housing affordable. My favorite tool is simply increasing supply. But it's not always that simple, unfortunately. Sometimes you have developers that just have one thing that they want to build, and that's it.
And I found it very, on your point, very interesting in our analysis. Well, first of all, that we're about, you know, three or four percent higher than the rest of the state as far as rent burden in Sweet Home. And also how, that's about the same percentage that are, like, our housing growth or the cost of housing. And our area has gone up. It's about four percent higher than the rest of the surrounding areas. And so a policy like that put into our code would make sure that developers weren't coming here wanting to build luxury apartments, that we're going to continue to rent burden our citizens, or make them places for people who were not going to be living here year-round, and incentivize people to include in their multifamily places affordable housing. So making maybe a portion of them luxury, but a portion of them affordable, and giving them a break to do that so that more of the residents of Sweet Home could live in the new housing.
I will say, we don't have much of a market for luxury stuff.
Oh, no.
We, we, at least not yet. We haven't been targeted.
Upper middle income.
But there has, I mean, we've had some nicer, more, more luxury style things. The newer apartments on Long Street are not necessarily luxury apartments, but they're very nice.
Yeah.
And they're, it, it's funny, because when they were first going in, some people accused them of being an affordable housing complex. And the developer's like, these are market rate, and he's like, I'm putting quartz countertops and stainless steel appliances in these things. This is nicer than your house. So it, it's, it's, it's funny, but some people see apartments differently than others, and they just assume that they're a certain level of, of build, and it's not always the case.
And that's, and that's why incentivize with code. Because otherwise, someone will come in and they'll plan to build market rate, and they'll want to put nice stuff in there so they can do the top end of the market rate. Whereas if we ask them, well, we could give you a little break on some things if you put some affordable housing, then they'll plan to put different things into their apartments to fit our needs of our community as opposed to coming here to build what they want for the profit that they want. This helps us plan.
When we talk about the, the cost burden, a lot of that is related to probably that we have a lower income in Sweet Home. So it's not the housing so much as it is.
It certainly, it, it certainly is the income, but, but it's certainly what, what's available. They, they, they do have a relationship, because the amount of income that, that a city has determines how much development activity they can attract. Because a builder's not, if, if your community is too poor, builders are going to be like, well, if I go build there, I'm not going to be able to get high enough to, to really make it worth my while. I'd rather build in this community over there because I know I can make a better, a bigger profit. That's, that's the, the issue you run into, and then it has the effect, sadly, it has the effect of raising the cost of housing in that poorer community because you have less development coming in. It's, it's certainly a, a factor, and it, it makes it, it makes it hard. So it's kind of interesting. What, what is the cause? I'm not sure which one's the cause. I mean, they're both the cause, but they're, they're both things you need to address, because one's not going to get fixed without the other.
All right, so.
I don't, I don't have any, any other updates from Sam.
Well, if nobody has any other further discussion, we'll go ahead and close the planning commission meeting for December first at seven thirty-one.
Thank you all.
Thanks you all for making.
Thanks for braving the cold weather today.